Everybody's ready, Jean, we're good to start the meeting. So I will call to order the special Board of Selectmen meeting for August 6th. This is a special session and with that, we have an agenda that cannot be changed because it's a special meeting. And so I moved to, I will move on to item number two of business. Discuss and take action to appoint Tim Lon, currently serving as provisional building official as assistant building official for indefinite term. Second, I got a second, great. Yep, so Tim completed his training and was standing, you know, stepping in temporarily and now is going to be the assistant building official going forward. He's got all his qualifications, so, and that was part of also the budget for this year. Any further questions about Tim and the position? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, item number three, discuss and take action to accept the Connecticut Connectivity Grant in an amount of $800,000 for the Scotland Avenue Improvement Project and to authorize the first select woman to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award pending Board of Finance approval.
Moved.
Second. Okay, so this, I'm not sure if we've got any staff on the inter packet. We had actually pulled this together last year to apply, we did not receive funding in the first round, and I guess they ended up having some funding left over, so they reached out to different towns that didn't get the first round. And, um, and we were fortunate to get noticed, but then they said, we need you to tell us if you're gonna actually take it quickly. So, um, so that's the letter that was in your packet. Um, this is a project that has really been discussed for a long time in CIP and was added, I think formally in CIP last year, but the roadway improvements have always been part of our plan. Um, and this is just basically making roadway improvements, but also adding sidewalks to it to kind of complete that circular sidewalk plan downtown. Um, so we were excited to get this. Um, John, I don't know if you just want to spend a second on the, uh, on the project and we had hired a consultant to put the plan together?
Sure. So that, so we did a conceptual plan as part of this, this application and it, it essentially includes pedestrian and bicycle improvements as well as roadway reclamation and incidental items like drainage and retaining walls necessary to build the sidewalk on the street. And so, uh, I, I think it'll, I think it'll have a lot of support with the community. And yeah, we're hoping to go forward with it.
Is there a little bridge on that road or a culvert or something? I remember doing the parade and always, well, and it's like a little wetlands area or something, is that gonna be an issue?
Um, it, there are two culverts on the, on the road, so, um, the length of the road is basically two low points, two dips. You know, then there's a crest in the middle down to another dip and then back up to Route 1. And they're, uh, they're, they're tidal culverts, so there's, you know, fresh water and saltwater flushing in both directions. Um, won't be an issue and it'll be part of the project, you know, that they'll be evaluated as part of this project. So if there's any kind of remediation or rehabilitation required for the culverts, that, that'll get incorporated into, into the work as well.
From a sidewalk standpoint, will they have to build like a, a bridge to cross that area type of thing?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I think this would be a situation where the sidewalk will, will, will be close to the edge of the roadway and it might involve building the shoulder out a little bit wider with, instead of it sloping down, maybe a, you know, retaining wall or a head wall for the culvert to provide enough room to get by, but it's not a situation like, uh, you know.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
We can anticipate, um, the usual questions and concerns from property owners about the sidewalks, is that right? Is this, is there any reason to believe that this sidewalk is going to engender different commentary than other sidewalks?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I think there'll be, there'll be people that are in favor of it, you know, and you'd be able to, it, it will connect railroad avenue to, to downtown. So I think it's very beneficial. You also have a, there's a, obviously JC Field, so there's a ballpark on the, you know, on the street. And, um, and then, you know, you're gonna get some residents in opposition, I, I would think so. We, we really won't know that until we have more outreach on it, but, uh, I'm, I'm hoping it overall will be beneficial.
Uh, trees like similar to Green Hill, do we have any issues with trees in the way of the, the side where the sidewalk's gonna go?
I, I can't think of any significant trees or really any, really anything significant at all in terms of trees, it's, but it is tight. Just as far as the homes are, are very close to the edge of the road on Scotland Avenue.
Yeah.
So there, it's definitely a challenging design. Uh, but no, not, nothing, I don't think like that controversial, like taking a big tree down. Uh, there's a, a smaller tree up by the, uh, the muse and I, I think along that frontage that I don't believe will be impacted by the sidewalk.
What's on the, so the sidewalk's on the opposite side of JC Field, just so I mentally can?
It, it, the sidewalk, we're, we're showing it for the, for the purposes of the concept on the westerly side, so the opposite side of JC Field. And it, just a visual, you know, inspection and what's walking the road, it, it appears that there's less constraints on that side. But, um, it's, you know, it's subject to change. I think it's, once we have a real field design, uh, survey, we can really identify all the constraints and the consultant will make a determination as to what it, what's the best approach here to get a sidewalk on the road. So, you know, maybe that'll change, but, yeah, the first look at it, uh, conceptually, we, we have it on the, on the west side.
Yeah, and that, that's in your packet, kind of the preliminary drawings. Um, the other thing I think is important to note on this is, um, that there is gonna be, um, an appropriation required for this, which has been planned for um, and has been kind of on the Board of Finance list of, you know, grant matching. Um, so the grant, total project cost came in. I will say, we were kind of astounded when they did the estimates, it seemed super high. I think the intention is to get the estimate a lot lower. I think we, John, recall, we were kind of like, this seems really high for this, uh, what we're doing.
And, you know, because it was conceptual, the, I, I think, well, I, I know that the, some of the quantities were sort of rounded up, you know, in, in terms of asphalt, piping, con- concrete for the sidewalk, everything was rounded up because it's, it's not based on real hard survey, it's conceptual. So I'm, I'm hoping that the, the cost is very conservative, you know, come down, so.
And, and there was a lot of contingency built into that, I think, too, and, uh, so it was around 2.4 million. And then we already had 490 in CIP for this and then the 800,000 grant, so the, the, we may need to appropriate like a million, a million one on this. Hopefully worst case scenario, and that's what the, uh, Board of Finance has had that tally going of, uh, and it's been noted in CIP, you know, because, um, we had started saving for this and then we're really surprised with the design and everything and some of the cost, but we needed this to, to apply to the grant. Um, so we needed a design to, to at least get the process going with grant. But I just want to make the board aware that we won't know the ultimate cost until we got to bid, obviously. And, uh, and the 800 has to be applied, we have to pay for all the designing work, the 800 is all for construction, right? John, I think that's what the, uh, grant, can you?
Well, you know, I, I don't know, I know lots of, is, you know, is, it's all about just construction. I, I don't know if it does not cover design off the top of my head here.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what the letter said, but either way, we're still gonna have a shortfall. We know that from what, um, we currently have out, because right now, if you add the grant with the 500, we're at, uh, 1.3 million, we're gonna still need some more funding beyond that. And we've been kind of, um, uh, we've been kind of, you know, uh, earmarking worst case scenario, hoping that it's gonna be a lot less. And I think, uh, so, any, any other questions?
Just one, and I know this has been probably going on longer than I've been on the board, but all of the residents that live along the street, they all know, like, they've all had conversations about how much or where the sidewalk's gonna affect the front of their lots and that sort of thing.
They, they, they don't, uh, you want me to address, so they, they don't all know necessarily. I've, I've had calls and conversations with individual residents that have, you know, heard about the grant and, um, were asking me about it. And, and actually, so I got some positive feedback from a couple of residents. Uh, but they won't all know until that we have a, um, public information meeting and that, and all the residents abutting the project will get an invitation.
Is that in the design process, John? Is that typically when we would do that anyways?
It, it'll, it'll be during, you know, probably after preliminary design, I would say, so that we have something to bring to the public and this is, this is what we think the best plan is and then review it with the, with the, the residents on the street and, and others.
Okay, yeah, it makes sense, you want something to be able to show them.
And, and I think it was taught, it's been talked about a lot over the last couple of years because the road desperately needed to be paved and it was one of these things, we didn't want to pave the road, knowing that there had, was an intention to do drainage improvements and then potentially a sidewalk, so. Uh, but we didn't, we haven't done something like we did with Green Hill, right? Which was kind of a different situation where we went out ahead before we even, uh, applied. Um, and, uh, did like, and that, we did a notification just to the neighborhood, but then it was a public meeting, right? So everything's always been discussed as a public discussion, but, um, so I'm sure we'll get some people to be concerned about the impact on their, on their property and everything, but, um, to John's point, there was an article now in the paper and we had a few inquiries, I think, just people wanting to understand it better.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? Nope. Okay, with that, then, um, I guess all in favor of accepting the grant proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. So this will move on to Board of Finance, I think is doing this tomorrow morning. Um, so we'll move on to item number four. And this is kind of staged through, so I'll read the first motion and then we can talk about the whole project and then the other two are kind of related to this. Discuss and take action to approve a request from the Facilities Department to return an amount of $264,515 for the Jeffrey Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project to the CNRE Unallocated Fund Balance Pending Board of Finance Approval.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, so, um, this is basically, um, relating to, there's been money in CIP for quite a long time to do some boiler upgrades at Jeffrey, obviously because the school's gonna be closing, that funding can be rea-, we want to use it for something else rather than, uh, that. Um, and, um, at the same point, the, uh, Daniel Hand HVAC Rooftop Unit Replacement Contract, uh, uh, Project came back and the bids were higher than had been budgeted, and so I'll let Peter talk a little bit about that. So the thought was, let's kind of go from, we're basically taking HVAC money from one project and a, and a building that's being closed and moving it to a building that we're continuing to use for an HVAC, HVAC project. But we kind of had to give the money back and then, and then vote to use it again. Go ahead, Peter.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? Um, good, so listen, we had a, uh, we had three bidders, uh, submit bids from, for the rooftop unit project, McKinney Mechanical, Save More Cooling and Heating, and NCon Heating and Cooling and AC. Um, we, after vetting them out and getting reference calls for all three, um, the lowest bidder came in at Save More and his bid was $3,165,000, which gave us a shortfall of 193,814 from the $2,971,186 that we have. So, well, by doing this, we were seeing if we could transfer this money from the Jeffrey School Project over to our project, giving us a minimal contingency of roughly $70,000 so that we, just for, in case we have any change orders that may, may occur as a result of this. We're hoping it's gonna be absolutely at the minimum because this is basically a pick and place job. We're not doing anything other than pulling the rooftop units off and putting new ones on with curb adapters. So that, uh, we can just basically have a, a brand new heating and cooling system over at Daniel Hand High School, uh, and, and, and get rid of the old rooftop units. Any questions about that?
No, not about the project. This does bring up an interesting question, which is, what is the future of Jeffrey? The school is, is moving along okay without this money and it's been there forever. I think this goes back to low cap, actually, but, are we setting, are we starting to set in stone the future of the school by pulling land money away from it? And this is, I guess, a question just to throw out there is, is when can we expect the school district to give us, um, a formal answer on the date that they're gonna hand the keys back over?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. Um, I would suspect that once this, once the, uh, staff has moved out of the building, we will turn the building over to the town. Uh, there is no, at this point, plans for demolition or, or repurposing of the building, uh, to any other, any other person's town or, or school. So I, I don't really have a clear answer for you on that. Uh, I can certainly see if I can press and find out a little bit more, but this is, this is all the information that I have at this point for Jeffrey. It is not being planned for demolition, but it's also, uh, not being planned for school use, uh, after we move out.
Thanks for that, Peter.
Even, I think to Bruce's point, though, which I think is a very good one, you know, let's make sure that we, maybe we have line of sight to a date out in the future so that, you know, it's not a two-week window and suddenly the building is ours and now we've got to start making decisions. I think the, the longer lead time we can have, the better to start thinking ahead and planning.
So, absolutely, absolutely.
And I think I, I've kind of conveyed those thoughts to the superintendent and to the chair of the Board of Ed that they really need to start this process now so that there is kind of a understanding of, you know, the timeline, when the keys are gonna get handed over and everything. So I think, and, and that'll be, I, I think a conversation that really starts to, needs to start happening in September, and they're aware of that. I think they just haven't, you know, just getting through all these projects has been a challenge alone, but, um, um, and then the intention is that, you know, with our new Facilities Committee, one of their charges would be if the, if the building is turned back over to the town, you know, to help figure out what puzzle that building could play, um, in, you know, whatever plans the town has and does it, you know, or is it something that we wanna, um, you know, put up for sale, demolition and repurpose, whatever, so, um, but point taken, Bruce, that it, it really, the Board of Ed has to kind of start having a formal conversation about all that.
Right. Then, I mean, we are now just days over a year away from the new school coming online, right? End of August next year?
Correct, yes.
So, um, I, you know, the, the, the wheels of government turn slowly in Madison and it will take us an honest year to figure out um, what we think we want to do with that building, so, starting now is not too early, really. So, we should keep that at the front of our minds as we're, as we're moving forward and setting urgencies.
Though, also knowing that it's coming to us at some point in time, I don't think that prevents us too from having, uh, you know, some, some open, candid brainstorming conversations about future use too. So I think we could even start the process without the Board of Ed telling us what's happening.
Well, it's, I agree, Scott, it's all predicated on them saying, yes, in fact, we intend to hand it back over to the town.
Yeah, I'd like to reinforce what Bruce said as well, because we do have a glaring example in the past of where the Board of Ed never got around to turning over the building. And so if nothing else, I think, um, uh, their stated intention about turning the building over is important for the selectmen to know.
And the town, and the town, too, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, and I would, I would take that even a step further. It's not just, uh, the Jeffrey Building, but it'll be the Ryerson Property as well. You know, these are things that our Facilities Committee needs to be able to start wrapping their head around as they've been investigating all these, uh, the list of properties that we have, because as Al mentioned, we don't want to have the same situation on our hands where we're just letting things sit around for an excessive amount of time. Um, we definitely owe that to the taxpayers in town.
Again, regardless, I think of what the Board of Ed decides, I think we kind of know the answer already without formalizing it of kind of where we're heading. So I can't imagine why we couldn't start the conversations at some point here.
I think that's, uh, you know, I, I do a meeting regularly, uh, we do a tri-chair meeting as well, there's a, uh, I meet with superintendent and I'll start kind of raising that flag again. We've talked about it in the past and they understand that it's important, but now too, we're a year out, right? So now's the time, so, um, and then Peter, obviously, uh, he is hearing that as well. So, okay, great, so I, the next two items just relate to this, it's shifting the funding around, so if, uh, everybody's.
I don't think we voted on.
No, that's what I was gonna say, we need to vote on item four and then I would, so I'll just read the motions and we'll vote on the next two. Um, so, uh, I guess, uh, all in favor of approving item number four, which is approving the return of the funds, uh, from the Jeffrey Boiler Project, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, so that passes. Um, item number five is discuss and take action to approve a request from the Facilities Department for a special appropriation for the CNRE Unallocated Fund Balance of $264,515 to the Daniel Hand HVAC Rooftop Project Pending Board of Finance Approval.
So moved.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item five passes, uh, item number six is discuss and take action to award a contract to Save More Heating and Cooling for the DHS, uh, Rooftop Units Replacement Project in an amount of $3,164,065,000 and authorizing the first select woman to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award, project funded in fiscal year 2425 CIP.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, and this is just awarding the actual project and Peter, you highlighted, there was three bids that came in, is, and this is the lowest?
It's the lowest, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Um, a- any further questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I know this is a nice one to get done, because it's during the year, it's always dicey what's gonna happen next with those things, right? They have a lot of problems, so, all right, well, good, we've got that, um, completed, so funding is done and, um, we're forward to seeing the project happen.
Yeah, see, this is great, we have a 30, we have a 30-week lead time, so this is perfect.
Yeah, great, okay.
Thank you.
All right, good, yeah, thank you.
Peter, thanks.
Moving on to item number seven, discuss and take action to award a contract to Ferraro's Painting and Restoration for exterior painting of the Bauer Farmhouse and Classroom in the amount of $64,080, $64,080 under state contract and authorizing the first select one to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award, project funded to, in the fiscal year 2021 CIP.
Wow, so moved.
Okay. Okay, great, and Austin is here. Just real quickly, this is, has been one that's been waiting around for a while and I think people will be happy to see this done. Go ahead, Austin.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know, he's, he's on, but we can't hear you.
How's it, Denver?
Yeah, yep, that's better.
The video's not working for some reason, but, um, so yeah, thanks to, uh, our new project manager, Ben Whitaker. We're gonna get this project started, we were in the works, uh, for about a year, um, getting pricing and looking at the entire project as a whole for what the future of the Bauer Farmhouse is, uh, so this has been in CIP, as you could see, since the 2020, 2021 year. And now we're ready to move forward and get the house painted in time for the Bauer Harvest Festival in October.
Uh, Austin, this is Al, um, uh, can we help the public, shed some light for the public on why it costs so much to paint this, paint this farmhouse?
So, yeah, thank you, it's, it's a big house and it's also the classroom, so two, two, two buildings can be painted. And, um, if you see the Bauer Farmhouse, um, you know, it's an, it's an older, older home and it's wood. So, um, we can't just scrape the paint off like you would on a, a newer home. There's a special, um, coating that goes on it, which then gets wrapped in plastic to remove any contaminated paint that may be in the, the current um, paint that's on the, the house and we'll strip it right down to the wood this time. Instead, the last time this was done, many years ago, it was just really painted over. Uh, so this will be a longer-term fix, um, that'll get us many years of, of more use out of it. So yeah, it's, it's, it's a, a great product that's being used and, uh, luckily we're able to go off the state contract as well on this. You know, I mean, having been on board has been a home role for me and my department, uh, to get these projects that have been sitting around and we've been able to, to conquer a lot of them, um, but there's a lot that have been funded for many, many years and, um, but it's been a huge help. So thank you, Dan.
And did we get more than this one particular bid? Was there, is this the lowest? How does that play out?
Yeah, so, uh, we did get a couple of bids back, but were, um, satisfied with, with those other bids. Uh, they didn't either fulfill all the obligations that we took in the, uh, when, when Ben went out and talked to them, they didn't respond with all the appropriate answers or didn't respond with all of the work they got. Uh, but it is off of state contracts, so we believe we're getting, you know, the best deal that we can.
I, I have a question, I don't know whether it's for Austin or Peter, but, um, what do we know about the structural integrity of this farmhouse? It's, is, uh, uh, it's okay to paint things if they're in good shape. Um, do we know anything about this farmhouse that might give us any pause?
Actually, I'm, I'm online here, Austin, I can help you out a little bit with this. Um, the bones of the house are in really good shape, uh, the, I mean, it is a well-built 19th century farmhouse. Um, so there really isn't a whole lot of concern about whether adding, uh, a, a, a large job or doing a large job like this, which would, uh, compromise the integrity of, of anything in the house, or, you know, we're not just throwing money down the drain. Uh, I'd like to step back to another question, Al, that you had, which was, why was it, why was it so expensive to paint this house? I mean, that is a big number to paint a house. Um, the house has obviously lead paint on it. Uh, that lead paint just can't be, we're, we're, we're restricted on sanding, so it's hand scraping and peeling off loose paint and then light feathering of the edges to blend in whatever paint is stuck on the house so that you can actually then put a good primer on and then two top coats. All that lead paint chips are, are, the entire house has to be encapsulated 10 feet out from the perimeter of the house. All those lead paint chips go into a plastic bag, they get double-bagged and then they have to go to hazardous waste. It's, uh, it's not like painting a regular house. Any house prior to, I, I want to say it's 1979, has to go and at least be lead tested. We don't have to really lead test this house, we know there's lead paint on it, because there's an awful lot of paint on there, so it has to be treated as such.
Is this organization that we picked, Ferraro's or whatever, do they specialize in this type of painting?
They're, they're, they're lead certified, yes.
Are they local?
So now, uh, I was not, and I know I was, I was, conversation with Ben on this, but I don't know if they were local or not. I think they're out in a haven.
They're in North Haven.
North Haven, okay, yeah.
And then what accounts really for the delay? I mean, this has been funded for so long. Um, what accounts for the delay that we experienced with getting this project going?
I think, on, on my, from, from my department's standpoint, there were a lot of things that when I first came into this department that needed to be checked off the list, um, that were previously funded, that were of greater importance. You know, the house is, as Peter said, structurally sound and it's not used on a daily basis, uh, it's a, a storage building right now with plans for the future, uh, to the CIP, which we have come in for. Um, but, you know, now that we took some of those other projects off the list and, and finished them and got them out of the way, now we're able to dive in and do some of these other projects that have been funded already.
Yeah, there, there was definitely a backlog, um, especially in the Beach and Rec area, um, that had built up over a long period of time. Um, and some of them, I think, might have been held off, because the thought was they're gonna end up being more than what we had in CIP. Fortunately, this came in, I guess, where you had enough funding, right, Austin? And, um, and they're using the, uh, state bid list, which is, is, you know, typically like the lowest, they do all the vetting and then they get the best pricing. Um, so we're kind of riding that for this project, so that's why they're not necessarily a local contractor, but they are vetted by the state. Vetted by the state. Um, and they're in the shoreline area, which is good, so.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, with uh, everybody's good on that, then all in favor of approving the uh awarding the contract, say aye. Great, okay, motion passes. Thank you, Austin. Good to see this one get done. Um. And I think that, so we just have one last item on the agenda, item number eight, which is um, discuss potential changes to the town roadway cottage. Road resulting from uh the Marina Landing development proposal. Um, so I had reached out, I think, to each board member independently. Um, I was approached by a developer who is looking. At a um, the Marina Landing uh proposal, which was actually approved by Planning and Zoning. I think it was at least seven years ago, um, that this was an approved project down. And when we talk about Marina Landing, we're talking about right at the border of Clinton. Off of Route One, there's a uh kind of old marina down there. It's also where our town uh. Kayak launches currently and then also like the oyster businesses down there, so um.
Right, the ice shack is kind of at the corner, right?
Yeah, and the ice shack is at the corner. Um, and this has really been kind of on the list of an area that we wanted to see some improvements in for a long time. It was talked about in the P O C D years ago and it continues to be a priority area. The develop, the, the current developer that, that is looking to develop the site is actually coming back with a different. Site plan than what was approved by Planning and Zoning. Um, and it's actually gonna be a less. Uh, dense use. There's gonna be fewer residential units. It's gonna be a smaller commercial operation. Um, but the way they would like to see the site plan laid out. Um, would actually require the town to move Cottage Road in a different, and they would obviously fund and pay for all this. Uh, but they would want to, it, it would help them actually make better use of the site down there, so. Um, and so in order to move the road, that, this would require board action on our part. And so we would have to go through a process. That would be um, you know, I think it's called a uh discontinuance of the current road and then the adoption. Um, or acceptance of the location of the new road. It's really. The, the front part of Cottage Road right off of Route One would be realigned and approved, but that would stay in its location and then. The extension would change and I can show it real quickly. I think some of you had seen the maps. They actually came back with um. A revision on Friday, so that uh, Bruce, what you had seen is slightly different and Alan Scott, what you'd seen is slightly different. John, I know you had been out of town and hadn't had the chance to look at the map. Um, but this is a, um, I think in, in, a little bit better in the sense that it's a clear. Where the town road is and then we would continue to, there's a small parcel at the end of this where the kayak launches and going up to the state. Parcel um of, of access to the Hammond, Hammond River. There's public property. And I think the idea would be we would want to maintain our access to the public property, maintain a town road. Um, and then just kind of relocate it a little bit to accommodate this new development. So. I will show you this. So today is just a discussion to show, but it would require us really to be supportive of this if we were to um. You know, we'd have to vote on these things and uh, so here it is. Um, so this is kind of the new, and this has not gone through planning and zoning again. I think because the development is approved, they would still have to go through and get. Certain approvals, but um, um. And I, and I, I didn't bring Aaron here to talk about all that either, what their process will be with planning and zoning, but I just wanted to have a high-level public conversation about this. Because it does involve the town road, obviously, and, and our um involvement. So if you see here, this is. Um, where the Ice House is right here. Um, and the new road, um, the developer would be intending to. Buy out these properties here, which are, I think, residential properties. Um. I'm not sure about the status of the Ice House, so I won't comment on that, but the entrance right now is, if you can see. Cottage Road used to like link together and then they relocated Boston Coast Road, so this is kind of an odd angled. In and out here as you go by the Ice House. So the intention that was originally planned that had been approved um by the town. With the original proposal was to straighten this out, so it doesn't look like it's part of Cottage Road, but straighten it out. Um, and then this is the existing Cottage Road right now. That goes through here and then it goes down here and you have the um, the kayak launch. And there's like a point three acres. It's not quite drawn on here, but that is town property. Um, so, the idea would be, is, is basically the road would continue. As like this, and then the new road would extend like up this. They're calling it Marina Way for the purposes of this drawing. Um, and this would still be a town road. It would just kind of hug along the perimeter of the property. And then it would, you know, go from state road to town property. Um, and then that it would allow the developer to make better use of the space for the development plan. Um, because this is kind of bifurcating right in the middle of, and this is a, a difficult, I will say, parcel. To get something functioning there. And there are requirements that the state would have because it's on a waterway about how much commercial usage would be there. The um marina and this would uh, you know, that's something that would uh, planning and zoning would have to opine upon. Um, it's gonna be a beautiful development. These are gonna be very high-end condos with beautiful views of the salt marsh. Um, it's gonna be fewer units. I think the original plan, and I don't have it in front of me, I think was like more like thirty-six units. Um, and it had more of a commercial component to it with like a restaurant and a boat storage and stuff. This is gonna be primarily residential. With um, it would, we would maintain the oyster business. They would maintain that and that would continue over here, which is on this side of the map. And they would have a, actually a boat uh rental business down here. With a pavilion, so that would be a nice add to have in town and it would be boats and kayaks and things like that. So that would be, this would be, all be available to the public and then we'd have the public access points here. So I just leave this to the board to, um, I know there's probably a lot of questions. I did speak to town council. You know, we would have to take these actions to, like I said, discontinue and then accept the new road. Um, and then we would have to hold a public hearing. And then we would also have to do a uh, because it's a change of public use and eight twenty-four referral to planning and zoning. Um, so there will be steps that will be involved along the way to do this.
You just, I, I know we talked about this, um, when you and I talked, but is there an opportunity just so that we don't confuse people with Cottage Road? Could we rename it to Marina Way or something else so that it's not perceived as the same road too?
I think we can. I think that's a town decision. We can do that. Um, it is kind of, you know. Confusing to people, I think, how it's bifurcated now and then yet it still has the same road. So the town could choose. Choose to call it Marina Way or choose to call it something else, you know. Um, but yeah, I think we'd have the opportunity to rename it.
Um, I mean, I, I, I think this is, this is a much better use of the property than the empty um stumps. That are in it now. Um, I, I think as a priority, we, we've. Kind of all landed on, on keeping the um, the public river access, um preserving that. Um, some way, and so I think if we can accomplish that. And make the site a little bit easier to develop by moving the road and doing whatever we have to do to do that. I, I. I think it probably makes sense. I would add, we probably want to keep the um. The, the probable bike lane. There's uh, what, the end of a bridge or an old bridge abutment. Um, going off the river. Um, we would want to make sure that that space is preserved. Um, for some sort of um ultimate bike-related bridge, which. We don't have any plans to do, but somewhere in the future they might.
Be the Greenway Trail or something, right?
When you uh. Move in, when you scan in on the plan, it does look like where that existing. Abutment is for the bridge. It looked like it's uh, it says New Gazebo. If you.
The round thing right there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it says existing river cove and just to the right of that, it says existing concrete. Uh. Lotment and then it says New Gazebo and overlook on former bridge abutment.
I think the bridge abutment is actually over a little bit more because this doesn't show the parcel either, so I don't feel like this is the most accurate portrayal of. Um, this is what I got sent on Friday. Um.
Okay.
So, uh, point taken. And then this is also. You know, their proposal, right? So I think we would need to get, flush this out a little bit more for sure. Exactly what was happening in terms of the um, the bridge abutment. My thought, I thought the bridge abutment was actually over. Uh. Here more, but I think we need to flush it out. Um.
And then Peggy, if you, you had mentioned that there would be like a boat or kayak rental business there, so does that mean there'd be improvements to. Uh, kayak or small boat access to this riverway as well?
Well, I think that's part of the conversation be, because the town needs to decide, um, do we want to. Keep this as our, you know, there's actually a plan to have. Uh, a kayak launch at Salt Meadow and this was kind of put in as a more easy fix to address it, but. There was a long-term plan at Salt Meadow and, and the, and the discussion was, do we want to relocate this to Salt Meadow? Um, but, you know, that's part of the conversation. I, I, this is early on, so I think these are all the types of things we want to go back and talk to them about. Like we want, really want to understand what this area would look like.
Yeah.
What would be town versus their business, but I think the, they need to have a commercial component to, for, as part of their planning and zoning approval process. So they liked the whole rental thing. Um, you know, and so I think it's a great option and if this could get all. Improved, because I think the launch site. Uh, you know, everybody thinks it's terrible, but it just hasn't really been maintained well, I would say. And also, it, there was minimal improvements. It was really just made into a parking area. So we would have a place to go, but you know, you could improve that launch as well and make it a real launch. Um. And then I know Bruce, you and I took, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think that would be great because that's really a very pretty area to. Go on, and I mean, you can take that all the way up past Red Edge Preserve and. Um, but we have never launched from our side. We always go on a dirt road. Just over the bridge on the side because there's a lot of debris, sharp. Things down there and if the tide is well, yeah, you can't, you can't use it safely from our side.
Did it once, once.
Well, a- and I think that's important that we figure out what, you know, i- is it that you can't improve it because it's. Structures that were in there from, you know, a hundred years ago, or is it just, it needs some cleanup done to it to make it more user-friendly?
Right.
Um, and then I know the plan in Salt Meadow was a great plan, but from what I understand, it's also was gonna be very cost prohibitive. And it would have like a long walkway going across the salt marsh. Bruce is more familiar with it than I am, but I think we need to look at all that and, you know, and. And see what would be optimal.
Is the developer uh taking the position that if the selectmen do not allow the. Movement of this road, that, that the development cannot take place? How critical is, is this to the, this development happening?
I, I mean, my understanding is this is the plan that works the best, right? So um, whether or not they would come up with some other plan to keep the road the way it is. I'm not sure, but um, I get the impression, I mean. So I, I don't know. I couldn't give a yes or no answer. Um, if we said, I think it, obviously it changes the whole landscape of this, right? If you take. You say, no, you gotta keep the road there, then it, 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 it uh, they have to rethink a lot of things, like where some of the housing units are, where their amenity center is. All that stuff. Um, I can't say with conviction though that they wouldn't move forward, no.
It's also predicated on purchase of properties and negotiations and all that kind of stuff too, right? I mean, that, none of that's a done deal, yeah.
I mean, I, I, I think if, you know, they, obviously because this is complicated and it's involving a lot of steps, you know, they're, they don't want to go through this whole process. And then at the eleventh hour, the board says, oh no, you can't, we, we're not gonna move the road. You know, because that blows a hole in the whole design, right? So, um. I mean, I, 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 I think it's a, a, a better use way of, of the landscape and everything here. Obviously by moving that road, that road has kind of been an awkward location.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and it's a, it's a large parcel that really doesn't have a lot going on with it right now and, you know, we've talked. Um, and we've heard it from folks during the strategic planning process about, you know, our entryways into town. On our east and west ends, you know, being kind of open to. Improvement and it seems to me like this fits the mark there and especially. You know, if there are some business opportunities that add, you know, for the developer that also add recreational. Opportunities for folks in town. Um. You know, and it, we're not paying to move the road. It's not the town paying to move it.
So, so I think then, um, I think, yeah, those are all important. Points, um, especially I think this does, you know, it, they're already with something approved too. So I know a lot of people are concerned with development and sensitivity of the area, but this actually went through an extensive process already to have. A um, you know, residential uh and commercial development here. Um, so. Um, I think it, it looks like a very positive improvement and um. And I think if we can maintain that public access and, you know, improve it, because right now it's just not really usable. It's not, you know, it's kind of usable, but it's not really attractive. I think it's a win. Um, so.
Company's not operating at this point, right? I mean, it's. Is it just an empty building at this point?
I think they took down, they took down the big warehouse building too, so it's, yeah, it's pretty minimal.
We were just down there uh like a week ago. There's still a large warehouse building there.
There was some, some, there's some building that's gone then.
There's a second one, yeah.
Yeah. There's definitely a building there, but there was another one. Um.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, there was definitely more on that site when I had been down there like two years ago and then I went down recently and, and it's cleared. There's one that's been removed, I think. Um.
What are all those white pipes in the ground, Peggy? Do you know?
No, I have no idea. We're probably doing different kinds of testings and stuff. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure. Um, well, I, so I think from the board's standpoint, um, then. We would need them to come back, it sounds like, with a clear understanding of what the prop, what the property lines would look back. At, like, at the uh, public access, how this would all work with the, you know, the bridge abutment, the, the kayak launch, a more detailed look into that. Um, and then I think we would then be probably fine referring this to planning and zoning as an eight, as a uh. Just so they have that to start with, an eight twenty-four referral, which is just basically saying, look, you know, with the roadway change, we're comfortable with that. Um, and we could bring that back up at the August or September meeting. And kind of move forward, but, but I'll try to get some of these questions answered and then we can maybe do a site walk with them and, and kind of work through it, so. Okay?
Sounds good.
Alright.
Okay, great. Well, with that then, I think, um. We're done. Oh, citizens' comments. Um, are there any uh citizens that would like to please raise your hand? We have any citizens on this meeting? Nope, looks like just staff. Okay. All right, well, with that then, I guess, uh, here are no objections. This meeting is adjourned and enjoy the evening, everybody. Okay?